...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
O Father who art in heaven, dear our God, it is once again that we humbly come before your throne of grace to give you thanks for all of your many blessings bestowed upon each and every one of us in the precious name of your son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Dear our God, we ask that you continuously bless our mayor, pro tempore, today and night, city council, our city manager, city attorney, and all the department heads as we gather together to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And in everything we do, we pray to be careful to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise. What's in Jesus' name we pray? Amen.
Glenn asked me so that a team would have, would be able to tell who votes for what. Instead, we said, "I will raise our hands." So if we vote, don't mind raising your hands. Could I get an approval of minutes?
Yes, sir. Dr. Watts, I can ask Glenn.
This is this part?
For the meetings last meeting?
I'm sorry.
Were you doing approval?
Approval of agenda first. I'm sorry. I said minutes, but I'll probably go over there. Approval of the agenda first. Can I get a motion?
We got a motion.
All right. Does in favor? All right. Now, approval of minutes, and Jay had some questions about something in the last one.
I did, and I wanted to ask you, Glenn, before we approve the minutes, or if we can table it for next time. We're talking about the new purchase of the vehicle for the, for Bert Rogers. We don't have any discussion in the minutes, and I was trying to figure out why, and if we can go back and put that in there before we actually pass it.
Let me go back and look at it. Janet did the minutes this last week.
Yeah, I didn't, but yeah. I just put everything that was said, but I can go back there and put it in.
Okay. So you want, you want to amend the minutes? Is what the request is?
Yes.
Okay. You want, what do you want in there?
Well, I wanted the discussion that we had, you know, up to when we voted for the purchase.
Okay, so we just table the approval of minutes, and next time we'll bring back both the last ones.
Yeah, we can do that.
My report, the, I had the opportunity to sit down with Commerce, Macio Nance. Macio, I've known him a long time, and this, I think he was just getting together with a number of people in the community. I saw people from Lata, Lakeview, Blue Board, that type of thing. Anyway, the meeting was about what, what Commerce, they were trying to accumulate data about what they thought the leaders of the community thought we needed to do in order to advance Dillon. And I just want to report what I, what I said to him. I think, you know, he said low line fruit, and I said, "Well, it's low line fruit, but it's awful expensive." And the first thing I mentioned to him is I thought making the I-95, 34 exchange for land, you know, and bring that.
Fill our community up, because we've got to give these tools and these opportunities to investors. Our town is selling, I believe.
Yeah, absolutely.
The buildings are cheap, y'all.
We'll look and see how we can link to those on our website.
But I have investors to call us every day, and I have to go all these scenarios and where to go. And it's a lot of places. I guess I can sit here and tell you all, but it's a tremendous amount of different areas you could do.
That's all I have.
Okay, Janet, finance?
General fund, our total cash accounts is a million one six hundred and twenty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Our revenues versus 2018, '19 would be, it was four hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars more in revenues than '19 than '18, but that also includes the two hundred and fifty-two thousand eighty-five dollars in the loan proceeds. You took that out, it would give you two hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and one dollars more revenues in general fund in '19 than '18. Our expenses was three hundred and sixty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars more in '19 than '18, but in that, you've got your garbage truck expense, which is two hundred and fifty-two thousand eighty-five dollars, and of course, your own main street paving was thirty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine. If you took those out, it'd bring you down to eighty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I got a positive of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand over the last year, you know, taking those out.
Only thing that I was concerned about when I reviewed this was the sanitation fees were not, not quite where we thought they would be. That's line item twenty-five dot zero zero three one eight zero.
Wait a second. Where are you looking at?
Sanitation fees.
What's your number that you're showing?
You're at seventy percent, you know, that should be kind of a...
Where are you looking at?
Are you in the expense side?
Twenty-five point zero.
The expense side.
Well, no, 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 I'm sorry. I'm in the revenue side.
And you got how much?
I got, well, we budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand, and we collected, we haven't collected, we collected twenty-nine thousand, and at this point, we ought to be...
What page?
Not twenty-nine percent.
What page?
I said line item twenty-five.
You're in expense.
You're in the expense side.
Let's look at that.
Well, it says sanitation collection.
Yeah.
Okay.
Collection meaning picking up.
Collection, so city sanitation fees.
That is, that's what we pay, that's what we pay to the landfill.
Okay.
That's what we pay. We've paid so far for the year a hundred and four thousand dollars.
Okay, all right. Turn it down then.
We spent a hundred and four. We've collected...
Okay, go, go.
So we only spent thirty percent.
We've collected...
Yeah, we're good there then. I'm sorry.
Thirty-three percent.
We've collected four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. We should actually be on the third page of that report.
Okay, all right. Let's see, what, what line item is that?
That would be thirty-one dash thirty-one hundred.
It's, what percent is that? We're sixty-seven, sixty-eight percent?
That's what we've got remaining to collect.
So we're only spending thirty-three percent.
Which is...
We've collected thirty-three percent, and we've collected thirty-three percent. You're getting me nervous.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, you know, and I was too, but I see my error. I should not have that glass of wine before I start this.
Okay, now, water and sewer. Our total non-restricted accounts is one million six hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Our restricted accounts is one million eight hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-two, bringing a total of all of the accounts is three million five hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. We have spent two hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars more in '19 than '18, but some of that you've got, if you had, you would have to take out your grant money on that, which would bring you that, like eighty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-six.
Still too positive.
More revenues. The expenses was, the expenses was two hundred thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars more in '19 than '18. And a lot of that's got to do with the repairs at the wastewater treatment plants and the Cypress Pond.
Does that also include what we paying in the grants to the two lift stations?
No, no, it doesn't.
That's not a part of it?
No, we don't want to expense that out until the project's completed.
Party, you got an idea how much it's going to cost to get that fixed out at the produce?
No, it's not here. I'm not moving back from, we've got a pump down out there. PLC's bad.
Yeah, it's not a pump, it's, it's a, it's the computer inside the lift station. It does read what it's supposed to read, so we have to shut it down and put in a bypass until we can get that panel sent to us. We'll be doing everything off the bypass at, at the pump station every day.
So the pump?
Yeah.
It's a control box. Okay. But you have to bypass it in order to fix it?
Yeah, we got to pump it out and get it, because without the control box working properly, it won't work.
The golf course, we collected twenty-one hundred dollars more in '19 than we did '18, transferred sixty thousand year-to-date. Our expenses was seven thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars more in '19 than '18. A lot of that's got to do with pumps as well and equipment repairs.
And you're not going to oversee until you save that money this year, right?
That's correct.
Not going to oversee?
Not oversee.
You transferred Todd out to the golf course?
He's working both right now.
So is he getting paid out of the golf course?
No, he's still coming out well from the center.
Well, the center?
Then our hospitality fund, we collected seven thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars more in revenues than '19 than '18. We still, we got five payments left of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars after we make our payment in February. So our, our revenues for this year for '19, year-to-date, is two hundred and five thousand six hundred and forty-seven, and '18, it was a hundred and ninety-eight thousand six dollars.
So we averaging, how much we averaging?
Anywhere from forty-five to fifty thousand a month.
Hospitality?
Yeah.
Two percent?
Four percent.
Two percent?
Two percent. Now, we have been up higher than that, but...
Did everybody report this morning?
Oh, year-to-date, that would be after, well, month-to-date, we did forty-six thousand.
Six hundred thousand.
Did everybody report this morning?
Yes. We've got, we got one, we've got the car.
And I also tell you, our biggest one is McDonald's, and then the month of October, all they had pretty much was a drive-through. They were doing remodeling inside, so that's probably, because we've been anywhere from forty-eight to fifty thousand.
Yep.
So that's probably where some of that difference is, because they were closed inside during the month of October.
About February, by the time we have to make our payment, we'll have one point two, about one point two. One point one five.
That's you.
Yes, you're back. I want to mention two things. I rode with Glenn around town, we looked at our road, our water runoff, our ditch lines. I really appreciate you doing that.
Absolutely.
I understand the situation. There's a lot of things going on in the city, and I know that Bert and his staff are working really hard to try to make those possible things happen with that. I understand we have a lot of tile that's collapsed, and that'll be hopefully repaired in the, in the upcoming years, but I appreciate riding with you. And the other thing is, I want to thank Benny and Rye, Angie Friedus. I asked them to do a simple task about cleaning trash up around Dillon, and they came up with a good plan, and hopefully that's something we'll, we'll continue. And I appreciate you, Benny, doing that, and Angie, all y'all done. And I had a lot of people to comment on some areas in the city that looked a lot better. And I think it was in, down around Hampton Street and some other areas that really have picked up their game, so I was really happy about that. I've had comments, good comments. I appreciate it.
Jan? Glenn, you want to introduce?
Well, let Bridget, if she would. Bridget, you want to give a little background on Mr. Epley and what we're looking at?
Okay, hello, everyone. So the last time I talked with you all, we were in the process of applying for the downtown master plan, and of course, during this month, we were notified that we were awarded that grant. And what we want to do with that grant is create a downtown master plan. And I'll let Jason get into why that is so important, but the reason I'm hoping that y'all will select Benchmark Planning for this task is they are a part of the North Carolina Main Street program. North Carolina Main Street program has, they're about ten to twenty years ahead of what we're doing here in South Carolina. He has worked with numerous communities and just our neighbors to the north. If y'all get a chance in the next little while to tour downtown Lumberton, please go downtown Lumberton and look at what they have done over about the last five years?
Yep.
About five years. If you, if you ever spent any time downtown Lumberton prior, and you look at what's happening downtown there now, you will be absolutely amazed. And so I'm going to give you over to Jason.
Who would you like me to stand?
Probably right here.
Wherever you want me to stand. I've already taken a lot of good notes tonight, so I appreciate all the discussion already about the downtown. My name is Jason Epley. I'm the president of Benchmark Planning. We're located in Charlotte, North Carolina. I was born and raised in Lexington, North Carolina, but attended Clemson University with a graduate degree from the College of Architecture and City Regional Planning. I've been working in downtown development now for over twenty-four years. I've had the opportunity for the first twelve years of my career to work with the public sector through the North Carolina Main Street program, and over the last twelve years, I've been a consultant. My company has been around since nineteen eighty-two. We were incorporated in nineteen eighty-six, and I've been the owner and president of the company since 2014. So that's just a little bit of background. I've had the opportunity to work in a lot of different places all across the country, over a hundred and fifty different communities. I've worked up and down Interstate 95 with communities, most recently Myrtle Beach, and as Bridget had mentioned, also done some work in Lumberton with their downtown master plan. And Bridget's right, if you haven't been to Lumberton in a while, it's pretty amazing to see some of the things that they're doing with their downtown plaza, the riverwalk on the Lumber River. They just really have a lot of success accomplishing some things recently. It's a long way to go, but, you know, every little step counts, and I think that's one of the most important things about having a downtown master plan is, is having a vision for where you want to head in the future. You've talked a lot about, a lot of different projects here tonight even, and I think the, one of the most important things about the plan is to have a roadmap of where you want to go, and then let's create an action plan of how we're going to get there. And how do all these little projects fit together, like taking out a, you know, a planner in one area, how's that going to affect the whole downtown, you know, the downtown as a whole? Or taking out an island, you know, what is that, how's that going to impact the downtown as a whole? So I think this gives you an opportunity to look at all those little improvements and all those ideas, and pull all those together into a master plan so that when you make those improvements, you know, okay, I'm making this improvement here, we know how that's going to impact this, what we want to do over here.
Check it off.
Well, not only that, but how can we leverage each little thing we do to make Dillon better? And I think that's the goal of the plan, and certainly my goal. I expressed to the downtown committee when we met a few weeks ago, it might have been a week ago, I'm not sure, a busy couple of weeks. You know, I think the most important thing to me is that you have a plan that's meaningful, that you can do something with, and it will not sit on a shelf. You know, I did not, you know, spend my whole career working on plans and working with communities to have something that's going to sit on a shelf. It's really important to me and to my company to make sure that we deliver a plan that's based on, you know, good research, based on input from you all, from the community, so that it will be implemented. You know, it doesn't mean it's going to be implemented overnight, but certainly, we want to help you identify steps that you can take during the first year. Here are some things that we can do as a community, okay? Years two through five, here are some things we're going to be working on, and then, you know, of course, there'll be some bigger picture, long-term goals and strategies, but the purpose of the plan is to kind of set, set all that out so that as you're knocking off these little things along the way, you know you're getting towards that bigger goal. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. I'm excited. Like I said, I met some of your folks from the downtown committee. They have a lot of energy and enthusiasm, so I think, you know, I'm excited about the potential of working with you all and be happy to answer any questions that you have. Yes, sir.
I noticed on a lot of your drawings and your project examples, Chris, you don't have that much, as far as instructions in the road, and it looks like the roadways are obstructed. Is that...
It looks like the roadways are obstructed?
Not obstructed.
Not obstructed, okay.
Is that true?
All right.
And most of your project examples, I was just looking, I was just, I liked that.
Well, I think, I think the most...
One Clemson graduate, so nothing.
Bless your heart.
See, I had to...
I had to look that up immediately. I saw that on his wall, the, the Carolina. There's a funny story about Carolina I'll tell you.
Don't say it.
Well, it is funny. I mean, I grew up in, I grew up in North Carolina, so when I went to graduate school at Clemson, you know, everybody started making, you know, like, oh, Carolina this, Carolina that, and I was thinking like, oh, Carolina, what about tar heels? And so finally, when homecoming guy, I got it. I was like, okay, I get it.
Right.
Yeah, because in Carolina, Carolina's the tar. Anyway, I think the most important thing about the question you just raised is the context of the improvement. And so some of those illustrations that you're looking at there, especially the one you just pointed out from Suffolk, that's a major intersection that has a lot of throughput, you know, with traffic, and so, you know, we did not show any, you know, improvements in the intersections as far as, you know, right in the middle of roadway for those particular, in that particular case. Now, there may be other cases where you do want to have landscaping in the median. It all depends on the context of the road, what's going on around it, what you're trying to achieve. So I, and, you know, I know, heard you had a little bit of discussion tonight about an island that you want to remove, and, you know, frankly, I just don't know enough about that particular island to tell you.
But that's something you will evaluate.
But that's something we'll evaluate. We have urban designer on our team, Dan Douglas, who was the director of urban design in Raleigh, which is another community, if you look at, you know, back in the nineties, downtown was pretty much dead in Raleigh, and Dan was pretty much the dynamic leader that helped change that and reopen Fayetteville Street. It was converted to a mall years ago, and basically, all the businesses had dried up because there was no traffic, and no cars coming by, and Dan led efforts to open that back up. And downtown Raleigh is an amazing downtown today, but, you know, not that long ago, downtown Raleigh really wasn't that great of a place to go. It was just a place full of state employees and some businesses and not much going on.
It just seems like a good trend is less things to take care of in these kind of projects to me.
Well...
But I know, I notice, and we have a lot of traffic downtown Dillon.
Right.
I mean, I see it every day, and it has to be way over ten thousand cars travel these roads every day, even downtown Dillon. Am I exaggerating with that? Am I being excessive?
Well, one of my first observations, you know, I've been, you know, through Dillon now and stopped and gotten out and met with folks and walked around, and, you know, one of my first observations is that you can't cross the road unless you look.
Right.
And that's good. And there's a lot of small downtowns that, you know, I'm on my phone, you just walk across the, you don't have to think about crossing the street. Here, you better, better think about it. And that's a good, that's a good thing. It's good to have traffic, it's good for business, you have your government center here, the post office, you know, this is all, these are all things that help generate traffic and drive people into downtown, and so you have a lot of, you have a lot of positive things already going for you. You can't, you can't create traffic, so the fact that you've got that is a, is a, you know, huge plus.
Ridge stuff is good.
Thank you.
Honor your breath.
I'd love to.
Tar heels got the...
It's a good weekend, it's a good weekend.
Jason said he met with myself, Bridget Thornton, and three of the members of the downtown committee, which is Stephanie Mitchell, Stephanie was on the phone with us, Brett Tompkins and Steve Johnson, and this is something that they would like for the city to go forward. That's something you had to rest in a minute.
Do we need a vote? A motion?
Well, no, you don't.
What's the end result?
The end result, you're going to come with a master plan of what he thinks based on what we tell him.
What's the cost of the city?
City's going to spend about five thousand, the grant is going to spend twenty-five thousand.
Does it have any other assistance to the five?
Pardon?
Any other assistance against the value?
And we should not have to vote on it.
But I think at this point, this is something we need to, it needs to happen.
Or lose the twenty-five. What is your timeline on getting this information back?
It's a, it's a nine-month proposal, basically. It could, you know, I tried to buffer in a little bit of time just because getting started in December, you know, with Christmas and other things going on, sometimes it's, you know, tough to have meetings, but actually, at least get started, you know, my folks can get started on some of the background work over December and maybe start with meetings sometime in January. But nine months is a, a good timeframe, but it could potentially be wrapped up before then.
Did you, did you go over those three phases?
I did not.
That may be a good idea, and I think he also left that, did you also get one of these? It should show the, the phase one, two, and three in that timeline.
So we've really put a lot of effort into phase one, which is the downtown assessment, because that's really, you know, one of the most critical phases of the project. If we don't understand, if you don't understand what we're, you know, what the universe is for, for downtown Dillon, it's hard to make a plan. And as part of that process, we're going to look at all sorts of things, you know, your demographics, parking, you know, building issues, opportunities, worst of opportunities. We'll look at traffic, we'll look at the urban design, you know, the landscape islands, we'll look at everything we can. We'll also, during that piece of the study, do what we call listening sessions, stakeholder meetings, and after talking with the committee, you know, a lot of that's really going to be focused on property owners that own property, talk with them about strategies to redevelop their buildings, you know, business owners, other folks in the community that have estate in downtown, and many people as we can to try to get a good, you know, feel for what some of the issues are. So that when we work on the plan, we're creating a plan that's addressing issues, not only that I see, but that, you know, folks that live here and do business here see with the downtown community. But once that downtown assessment is completed, that's really going to kind of be the foundation, if you will, for how we build the plan. From that, we'll have, you know, just visioning, goal setting, you know, have community meeting, and then ultimately, we'll have the final master plan, and that master plan will be built upon all those things, the research, input from you all, from the committee, you know, obviously, I'm going to have some, some of my own thoughts that go into that process too, but ultimately, the goal is to create a plan that is, like I said in the beginning, that's realistic, is something that you can implement, and, you know, has some phasing to it, you know, you're not going to be able to take it all at one time.
This is something the city council's going to have direct input with?
Well, yeah. Council, business owners, property owners, as you mentioned, general public, and all, they have the opportunity to...
But we'll be aware of every aspect of it.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can get our...
Motion or...
No, sir, I mean, just, we can, we don't have to have a motion to do this because you approved getting the grant.
Okay.
And then from, far as hiring someone to do this in our own procurement policy, professional services, we don't have to bid out, that's just selected. So, I mean, there's nothing you need to do. You've already passed a resolution to apply and to go forward.
If I can get a understanding that we're going to pay you five thousand dollars to do, not the twenty-five thousand?
No, their total cost is thirty thousand dollars.
Total cost is thirty thousand?
Twenty-five coming from the grant, five thousand from the city.
Just curious, you know, you said you closed that road and, uh, street in Raleigh, or you opened it back?
Really, yes.
You know, what kind of businesses were there? I'm just, you know, I was curious because I lived in Miami for years, and I would love to see if Lincoln Road was still up and going, and it's still, you know, the, the road's closed, but it's, you know, all shops, and it's a, it's a great area. What were the businesses along that road that did...
Sure, you know, so it goes back to the, the whole, you know, the conversation about context. In, you know, certain contexts in the downtown, there may be an area that should be a pedestrian mall.
Right.
In downtown Raleigh, that was like one of the, you know, the main thoroughfares that had been blocked off and turned into this mall, so pretty much all the, a good bit of those buildings were vacant, because you could not support a business off of, you know, just... Uh, because you could not support a business off of, uh, you know, just state employees that had offices there walking around, or the occasional visitors on the weekends. Uh, and so, when it opened up, the, part of the strategy was, while they were actually converting and doing all the construction of Fayetteville Street, uh, the city actually increased the facade grants during that period, so that when the street opened up and was all nice and pretty, all the businesses had been redone too, uh, became restaurants, if you've been there now, you know what they are today. Uh, you know, lots of, you know, some nightlife going on, and, uh, you know, viable businesses, because to have, you know, building off your traffic concern about the one-way, when you do have two-way traffic, you know, it creates more business opportunity, uh, you know, more visibility.
Business that's on that.
Well, there's, there's other, there's, like I said, about context, right? Uh, so this particular street, uh, in Raleigh, the context was, this is a, you know, I mean, it was blocks and blocks and blocks that a major street was closed, uh, that, you know, all of a sudden now is open, and, you know, just really just businesses started to thrive.
How many different cities, cities close to us have you done a master plan? You said Lumberton?
Oh, let's see, over the years, um, you know, Merle Beach, Lumberton, uh, Fayetteville, um, Wilmington, I'm trying to think of all the others. A lot of small communities, might have been just resource-type visits. Any other, like, right around here, uh, that's probably in close proximity.
Did you finish the Merle Beach?
The Merle Beach plan, uh, was finished and adopted in March, and the city has rehired us, actually helped them with the implementation. Uh, so they're moving forward, and, uh, it's, it's really amazing, they've, uh, you know, if you've been to Merle Beach, which I'm sure you have, uh, there's still some remnants of the historic downtown in Broadway, uh, and 501 is gonna be realigned, uh, so that big curve, this main street now is gonna be closed. And so the city's really, you know, they're taking it to heart and, uh, doing their best implement the plan. They're doing the engineer studies now to look at how that's gonna, how the city plaza, which I think is in the rendering there, is gonna, you know, come to life. Uh, they've hired an architect, uh, LS3P is working on the drawings for that. Uh, and so, and they've hired us to help guide the implementation, uh, of it, so.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Strickland from PDRTA.
There's two different things there, and, yeah, Mr. Mark Savisky of Care First Foundation, I'm asking him to come up too. We've, um, we're gonna tag team this so we can get it done pretty quick.
Great, thank y'all.
So, um, I heard the word, Mr. Nance, Maceo Nance earlier, and, um, we're here, um, before the city council. Thank you all for having us to talk about public transportation again in Dillon, in Dillon County. Um, uh, there's been a real big push, PDRTA, um, has, uh, six years ago, 2013, we had to enter a Medicaid contract. At that point, um, came out of Dillon County. We have not run public bus service in Dillon now for over six years. And, uh, we get a lot of calls, a lot, a lot of information, a lot, a lot of folks reaching out, when, when and where, how can we come back? And, um, we're here to talk about that tonight. Um, there's been a real big push from the industry side, industry side, from the public side, um, from your Harbor Freight, um, you know, Purdue, um, they've been at the table. We've had several, Manheim was on the table, we have a lot of folks that we're looking at. Um, this plan, I'm gonna start going through it, and I'm gonna apologize because I printed in black and white to try to save money in some of the pie graphs, and I have to kind of go through for you and give it to you. But, um, if you want to, we'll dive right in real quick. Uh, page three, I'll just talk about that. Um, we do surveys onboard our entire system, and, uh, one thing that I like to do, kind of share with everybody, is to show that among all the passengers that are using public transit, PDRTA, we're currently in the five counties, forty-one percent of the folks are going to work, twenty-seven percent are going for medical appointments, fourteen percent is going to school, and fifteen percent, they don't tell us where they're going. They say other or personal, whatever it may be. But the big one is forty-one percent is going to work. A lot of folks don't realize that amount of employees that we transport in the five counties that we're actually operating in. Um, the next slide is talking about vehicles, so we do this, like I said, with over a thousand people, and eighty-one percent of the folks that are using the bus service say they have no access to a car. So they don't have a set of car keys. Um, the interesting thing that we find is that, if you look down, uh, sixty-eight percent say, says zero, uh, twenty percent has one, uh, car in their household, and, uh, let's see, uh, two is, uh, five, uh, seven percent, and then two or more is five percent. So one thing we find with this is that some, a lot of them do have cars, but somebody else is using it in their family, so it could be a kid going to school, or a spouse going to work, and, uh, that's just another we find interesting there. The next slide talks about age range. Um, forty-six percent of the folks that are using our bus are between forty and sixty years of age. Uh, sixty-plus category is twenty-three percent. Mr. Mark's gonna talk about some of the senior situation here in a few minutes. Uh, twenty-eight percent are in the twenty to forty-year range, and then three percent is less than forty. Then we're just going into some ridership's information, just to kind of show where we are now, where we're heading, the downtown shuttle. That's actually at Florence, you can see that how the growth is there. The next one is a service we're gonna talk a little more about, but that's in Marlboro County. And, um, it's doing extremely well. We started the service last December. Um, we really feel like the model can, can pretty much be a mirror image for Dillon. And, uh, you'll see that the A and B trips within the city of Dillon, we started at three hundred and twenty-three per month, and now we're up above fifteen, fifteen hundred trips per month on that little, little route running around the city. Um, the demand response from Marlboro County, um, along with, uh, fixed routes that we run, um, the demand response, you can see the increase there starting last December, and we really feel it-
What is the demand response?
Good question. Demand response, so we have, there's a couple of different types of services that we provide. One is a fixed route, where, um, if you've been to Florence, you may have seen the bus stop signs along the side of the road. Um, passengers wait there to pick, to catch the bus, um, that, that's our fixture. Demand response service is another service, we have two different parts of this. One of them will be, we have to provide a service that if anybody can't access the bus, the bus on the normal route, if they're a walker, a wheelchair, down a dirt road, we actually go to their house, pick them up, take them to their appointments. That will be a service that, that we're, we have here, but we, we could definitely do that. Um, and the next slide kind of gets into the meat of why, why we're here today. Um, the Department of Commerce, SCDOT, um, the county, some of the area industries, we've, we've been, um, we have been having conversations now since February this year. And, um, we waited until this time because we, we were just trying to lock down some larger commitments. So the Department of Commerce and SCDOT at the table right now, if everything were to go, go forward, they're, they're gonna be able to provide one point one million dollars for buses. With that service, um, the service that we're looking to do, we'll be connecting Florence County, Marion County, and Marlboro County to Dillon County. Um, we've heard from the industries, and, and there's really just a big need between the inland port, Harbor Freight, Purdue. It's gonna be able to open up their recruiting areas, and, uh, it seems like they all wanna hire more people. And, uh, it would actually give them an option to be able to do that. Um, beyond that, beyond the industry piece, we're looking at, um, several buses being able to run throughout the city of Dillon. We'll be able to connect Lakeview, Atlanta, and Little Rock, and Hamer, all to the city of Dillon. And, and that's a daily service that we'd be able to provide. Mr. Savisky's gonna talk a little more about that in a minute too. Um, so it's a lot of, a lot of moving parts, a lot of miles, a lot of hours. Um, we've had three job fairs recently. Uh, we're looking to employ two to three, um, employees from Dillon County. Probably most likely a mechanic and then at least two operators. The other areas, we're gonna have to have operators because those services will start outside of Dillon. And, um, so we're, we're looking forward to doing that. Um, Mr. Mark, you wanna step in and, uh-
Sure, sure.
Go, go back in.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. My name's Mark Savisky, I'm with Care First Carolina Foundation. We're actually the supporting foundation for Care South. Um, a couple of years ago, we got together with, um, Don, and we were talking about some issues we had with trying to get patients moved around to our medical facilities. And we found that one thing everybody had in common was if they're sixteen over, or if they're, um, having health issues, trying to get back and forth to a, to a medical appointment can be very difficult. At the time, we were trying to develop out the new McCall facility that was, that was built up there. And, um, talked with Don, and found out how much matching, matching funds, 'cause you were trying, we looked at trying to do an internal, um, just a Care South transportation thing, and the costs were just astronomical by the time we figured it out. You know, having to pay somebody a full-time salary, getting them, having dispatchers and the whole nine yards, just gotta be crazy. Um, so we kind of tabled it, but then, um, it ends up being that as a community, we were able to take it over in, in Marlboro County and connect smaller communities together. Um, as the foundation, we were, we were trying to work with the demand response and the essential services aspect. What we consider essential services, going to see the doctor, going, going to get groceries, um, going to get your dental appointments, that sort of thing, and you'll do that on a, on a looping basis. Um, we found that while the employers wanted to use the trap, that they would have the buses, the buses would just sit there for six hours or eight hours until the next shift goes in. Well, now we can put them all to work, and have them rotate within the community and push people around. Let them go where they need to go, and keep your, uh, keep your buyers at least here. And you've got a lot of folks that are shopping on Amazon and all the rest of that stuff, that's, that's the, that's the new boogeyman for retail. I was in the newspaper business for twenty-five years, and I've never seen anything like it. People don't want to, they, they don't wanna go out of the house. Well, this is a way to get them out of the house. And it's a way to get them to a business. Um, and if you've got good service and a good business, they're gonna keep coming back, and that's what they're gonna do. And if you're trying to build your downtown and build the traffic for your downtown, having a busload of people come off, um, makes a big difference. The other aspect of it for us was, uh, we looked at it as a way to partner with smaller nonprofits, smaller communities. They could come through and use Care First as a, as their agent, for lack of a better term. Uh, we would make sure that they, they were in on the, uh, all the decisions that were made. If they wanted to come to a meeting or something, they'd know what it was gonna be. Um, in the past, a lot of times when things were taken over by larger entities, counties, states, that sort of thing, the little players that are going in that, that do make the difference, they're those, you know, pennies make dollars, um, they get kind of left behind, they don't get the information that they need on a timely basis. Uh, we wanna make sure that happens, since we've done that well with, um, all, we've got ten players, ten different, um, partners in the Marlboro County initiative that we got there.
The Marty.
Marty. Um, we've got ten, ten partners there, and they're just come through Care First. And that's what we're able to do, is, is try to help make sure that they get the information that they need, they get ridership numbers. Um, when it comes to where you're gonna have your stops, that sort of thing, you know your time is better than anybody else. So as we started the thing, it's actually taken us a year, probably, to try to, to lock in where all the stops are gonna be. Um, the demand response piece, um, we've got a part, one of our partners is the Department of Aging, and we've done some, uh, food, food giveaways and things like that. And, um, Marlboro County, we give out a way of cards, called the Marty Card. We'll probably come up with something similar for the whole system. But basically, in order to get any money from the Department of Aging's aging, you have to track that individual out of the bus and off the bus. And say, okay, somebody's sixteen over, got on, and then got off here. So if it's one mile, or ten miles, or twenty miles, we can bill for that. But if, otherwise, and it's a free service, so I mean-
Who do you bill?
Um, the Department, the Department of Aging actually is the one we would bill. Um, but what we do is we collect those, that data, and then, once we can prove that those people are on there, there's, they've committed, um, for Dillon County, they've committed ten thousand dollars. Um, but what they've said is, we'll give it to you, but you gotta prove to us that somebody got on the bus. We're not just gonna give you ten- We're just not gonna give you ten thousand.
You do it based on your actual data?
And what we've done there was, the demand response piece of this, most of those folks are sixteen over, they don't have a way, if it's hot, they're not gonna walk to the, to the curb. So it's a way to underwrite those smaller vans that you would use to go down the dirt roads and go into the smaller communities.
And those are wheelchair accessible?
Wheelchair accessible.
Every vehicle we operate, we have, every vehicle has to be wheelchair accessible, so everything we operate can take two wheelchairs. Everything has six to eight audio, video surveillance cameras. Every bus we operate has a bike rack on it. So if you're going out in rural areas and someone is a mile away, they don't wanna make that walk, they ride their bike, throw it on the front of the bus. Um, I didn't say it earlier, but roughly seventy percent of our entire operational expense is paid for by federal grants. A percentage is paid for by the state, and then what's remaining, we have to come up with on the local level. And that's, um, you know, that's kind of leads into the, the conversation itself. Um, the bus stop signs, you know, we, we work with, uh, local city, SCDOT, enclosure permits, design review boards. It would be something that Dillon, you, you guys would decide kind of what you want to look and where you want them. You know, certain places, you can't put certain things in the historic district, but there's, uh, we, we do all that type of work. Um, it's just that we really feel strongly connecting these rural areas to the city of Dillon and, and what it can mean. A lot of folks are looking for options, mobility options. Um, I've heard it said in several meetings now that they, people are, you know, paying someone fifteen, twenty bucks to bring them ten miles into Dillon.
Yep.
And this service, uh, we didn't talk about it, but one thing we're looking to do is making it fare-free. Uh, it will be no cost for anyone to use the service. And the reason for that is because fare box revenue that we collect and those automate, expensive automated fare boxes can't be used for local match. It only reduces the net cost. So if I could get two thousand dollars in local revenue, it's like bringing twelve thousand dollars in a fare box. So it just, it's not feasible, your mechanics have to go to road calls because fare boxes are jamming. I gotta have someone count the fare, gotta have someone deliver it, so it just makes sense for, really for every service we provide, because unless the federal mandates allow us to use those funds as local match, it makes sense for it to be fare-free.
What do you want from the bus?
Well, we are, um, we've been waiting on a few things to take place. We have commitments from Commerce and SCDOT. Um, the service that, that I'm describing, um, with the assets, um, the, the service itself is about six hundred thousand dollars a year to operate. In fact, it's about six hundred and fifty. Um, we are having to come up with, um, roughly thirty-three percent of that, because, you know, like I said, sixty, sixty-seven percent is covered on the federal side. We've made some huge strides, Mr. Savisky's been working with a lot of different entities, we have a lot of partners. We've had a lot of partners waiting to see what Dillon County was gonna do before they would say they, they were gonna do anything. And, um, Dillon County is moving forward with, with their commitment, um, of thirty-six thousand dollars on an annual basis. And one thing for us is it can be spread out over, over months, it doesn't have to be a lump sum. We draw down, uh, our funds based on what we spend each month.
So a third of that, six hundred thousand, you need two hundred thousand, and the county gave you thirty-six thousand?
Thirty-six, yes, sir.
They commit that the first year, or is that over a three-year period?
Uh, the agreement that's in their hands right now is over a three-year period, so we'll-
Oh, twelve thousand.
That's thirty-six thousand a year.
Thirty-six thousand a year.
A year for three years.
A hundred.
Thirty-six thousand a year for three years.
So they're gonna give you thirty-six thousand dollars per year for the next three years?
That's correct.
That's the plan.
Well, wow, but, I mean, there's, it still leaves, you know-
So our model that Mark's talking about, we, we, um, we certainly, we don't wanna go to one stakeholder for a hundred thousand dollars, because-
What are your resources outside of the county then? Lata, Lakeview, Dillon, city, who else do you go to for that money?
Well, currently, currently, what I'm working with, um, there's, we're trying to break it up into three revenue generating sources. The first one is gonna be advertising revenue, that we can get, like, to your McLeod's of the world, your First Banks of the world, the, um, the folks that would have-
What typically does that generate?
It's around seven thousand to eight thousand dollars a year, depending on the size of the bus.
That's wrapping an entire bus.
Yeah.
Running around the entire city.
Yeah. Um, and then you've also got your, uh, if you do put up your freestanding, uh, bus stops, you have advertising revenue you can generate off of those. That's usually incidental, but it's some, well, another way to keep revenue generated. Um, the, um, AAA funding was ten thousand, we've gotten Harbor Freight, um, just the, they're gonna go in with twenty thousand dollars a year, and that's gonna be just on the, um-
Public.
Public side, and they'll probably give smaller than the employment side. Um, because what you're looking at from total number, you've got is employment and-
Yeah, that's-
That's employment and, um-
It's treated as two entities, but it all comes back to one pot to be able to draw down all the federal funds to provide it. And our operators that are coming in from these other, other counties, they're gonna transition over to the public piece that's gonna connect all the outer line communities and the services that are run around Dillon.
Between the industries that are in Dillon County and the money you're trying to generate, how much money do you see coming in?
Um, what, what we're, what we need, or what we-
What I'm saying, you say in the county, it's gonna give you thirty-six thousand.
Yeah.
I don't know what Lakeview or Lata has decided before you.
Yeah.
You've reached out to the industry, what are the other industries that you're gonna be commuting these people to?
Well, they're basically gonna have to come up with another hundred and sixty thousand. Well, they're basically going to have to come up with another 160,000.
Well, I've got about 120,000 that's committed right now.
36 from the county.
Yeah. And then we've got at least, we've got one wrap, we've got AAA funding, we've got Lata has agreed to start, they've agreed to.
What does Lata decide to give?
A million dollars. What we try to do is we try to take it and we try to, for example, in, in Clayo and Bacall, they ask, we got asked them for 2,500 bucks a piece per year, right? And with Blenheim, Blenheim's about the size of Lakeview, for example, so we asked them for 2,500 bucks over three years. So we're trying to do the same thing with your smaller communities here, because it's , we're giving them a value, because it's a base, not based on distance, because if it was, it'd be a lot higher. For Lata, they're giving, they're committed to 4,500 over three years. And then after that, they're going to commit further. After the third year, they're going to re-up, because they feel it, it's a worthwhile project for them. And they've also got some local advertisers and some local supporters that will help it. But Jared has been very instrumental in trying to make sure that the folks know the value that we've framed at the table here and, and seriously, he is, he is worth a million to me.
Do you think my cloud would be at the table? We're working with them now.
I've got an appointment with her for next week, yeah. We've got Northeastern Tech, MUFC.
Local or cloud?
Local.
Local.
I talked to Joan, trying to set, trying to set something up.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
The number two there on the back where we asked the city of Dillon, you've got a minimum of two sites where the potential riders will wait safely, with a mixed bus inside. Explain that.
Oh, generally, it's kind of like, if you've got a, those are some things that we did over in Marlborough County. You want to try to make sure that there's somewhere they can go. It could be a DSS, or it could be a, like, we've got one of our medical sites that they can go in there, have a place to sit and wait for the bus to come. You want to have at least a couple of those within the, within the system to make sure that there's a safe place for them to be, a safe place for them to wait. If it has lights and air conditioning and that sort of thing. A lot of times businesses don't mind having it if they've got some space, because they'll also go around and shop.
But I guess after the fourth year, you stated there, 2,000 of these funds would be used to building closed bus stop each year, and y'all would match the eight.
That's the beauty of that. And that one, it was, what we were going to look for was 10,000 from a regular, a year from the, from the city, and then 2,000 additional for opera, for the building piece of it.
Capital.
Capital funds. Because we can match capital funds, eight, was it 80,000?
Yeah, so any of the bus shelters, bus stop projects, like if we find an area where there's eight or nine people that's always waiting for the bus, we can go in and put a bus shelter. The bus shelters for concrete and installs about $10,000, but we get 80, 80% of that in federal funds. There's other things that we can look at doing too, like for bike, I don't know if Dillon's thought much about that, but you know, for, you know, the stations in large cities you go and you can actually drop a dollar or a few and rent a bike, and PDRTA through a couple of different programs, we can get 90% federal funds for that kind of project. But the trick is, it's got to be along, along the fixed route that we provide. But we can get, if you can come up with 10%, we can max, we can get 90% to put those bike rental stations in. But it's got to be close to proximity to the actual routes that we're running.
Who's the black station?
It depends, it could, that could be anywhere from 10,000 to 200,000, depending on what you wanted to go with, that was just four or five bikes. I mean, they have electric bikes, they have a lot of different options now that you can actually come in and you start, maybe start small and build it from there. But that's kind of where we're at. We, there's a lot of things still, a lot of work to be done in the next couple of months to be able to make this thing happen. I have public hearings in Dillon this Thursday. We've had three job fairs now. We've felt we've got a couple of good candidates, and recently a mechanic that we're hoping to bring onboard if it, if everything goes well. You know, the majority of all the fuel we're going to buy will be right here in Dillon. There's a, you know, a lot of, you look at the economic impact and what, what it's going to do for the city, and then bringing all the folks in from the rural areas, I think it will be a, you know, a really good thing for the city itself.
When is, what's your plan of starting date?
Well, we've been delayed somewhat. So originally, we were hoping for December. We, I have four assets that I've actually gone out and borrowed from other transit authorities, because the, all the money I'm telling you from DOT and Commerce, we have to actually do an RFP process to actually buy, like, well, state contract, we can get a little bit quicker. But I've borrowed four assets, four buses that we'll be able to use, and if everything moves forward, the next county council meeting, the documents are signed that we need, and if this meeting were to go well tonight, and a few others, right now, we're probably looking at first of January to be able to get this thing started, and it's going to be cool. But it's certainly possible. We're moving things now, we'll have the operators trained, all the operators are trained first day CPR, they're all certified. So there's a lot of, you know, a lot of things that's got to happen to fall in place, but we're moving right along, and I feel like, you know, we're going to try to get the right amount of stakeholders, so that if anybody has to bail, it's not going to end the project. We want to be able to make sure that it's sustainable, which is something we haven't been able to do in certain areas a long time ago, so that model has changed. We want to make sure the product we're putting out there, we don't want folks to get acclimated to it and fall in love with it, and then have to rip it away from them. We want to be able to make it stay.
You're asking $10,000 a year?
Yes, sir, for a three-year commitment.
Some of other communities have used their, the funds from, was it the, I'll think about it in a second, hotel accommodation tax funding, that sort of thing?
Hospitality.
Some of these hospitality fundings, that sort of thing for, because it kind of ties in there. But it's all, it's all.
Might be a twist.
It might be a twist.
Yeah.
On a tourism basis.
All right. Mr. Strickland, would you be willing to go back in about a month, since you've got some even more moving parts, and you're trying to piece the puzzles together till we can find out how much money you're actually going to generate after you've talked to all these other people?
I certainly can. I mean, I will say that we're, we have to have, my board has to approve this process. They haven't approved it yet. I have, I have a board meeting the next Thursday, where I'm bringing this kind of information to them, and they're going to want to see kind of where we're at before they can approve it. Everything is in place. The public hearing piece that I'm having this week, all those comments go before my board. They'll hear those. If, you know, we come to Dillon and 500 people show up and say, we don't want public transit, then we won't have public transit. So it's going to be contingent on that as well. And, but I certainly can. I do think that if we want to try to get started in January, we do have to kind of get the ball rolling. And I know that I probably should have been here a few months prior, but we were kind of waiting on.
Well, you know, it's just $10,000, you know, that we might find in a budget that we don't have a lot of fluff.
And the other aspect of it is, is it comes, you don't have to spend $10,000 by January 1st. It's 2,500 a quarter, if you want to do it that way, so it alleviates your cash flow issues.
And actually, your, your federal fiscal year is July, so really it's $5,000 before your new budget is, is in place.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's a correct some. I've been doing this.
I spoke with county chairman, Steve Wright, on several occasions in the last week or so, about, I think the county is going forward now. I can't speak on their behalf, what they're paying, but I don't think they're paying 36,000 the first year. I don't, I don't think that's correct, but I could be wrong. So I want to speak with them. I sit here and Mr. Strickland and I had this conversation last week. Is there a need, undoubtedly there is a need if the industries are, are one of the reasons they're pushing it, because they're pushing what they need, which makes sense.
We get the advantage of having those buses here while they're not.
Absolutely, absolutely. Do we, and I'm in the middle of town every day, maybe I have blinders. I don't know the need in town.
Yeah.
I really don't. I don't know how many patients come to you that, that do. I don't know about Douglas.
There is a number, and they charge them, you know, all kinds of money to, well, I mean, 12, 15 dollars for a family member. I love you, but I didn't need my money. You need to pay for gas.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think there's probably a need, you know, one of the things he and I talked about, and he brought up, and I'm glad you saw the back of that page, Councilman David, I don't know if many saw that. You know, location is the heaven in there. City Hall or city county complex could be a location, because you have central area here, people paying water sewer bill, maybe some property tax, probate court, you know, whatever. And then you have a, a large grocery store across the street, so you know, that could be something that could be done here.
Mr. Strickland, you walked back in. I want to ask you another question. Your bus service hours, what do they do?
Okay, so, that's a good question. The services for industry, in order to come from those other counties, you've got to start at 5:30 in the morning to be able to get to Harbor Freight and Purdue and other places. So those buses will actually drop off the first shift employees, then they would be able to start. So I would say somewhere around 8:00 AM, and you're looking at about 8:00 to 5:00 on the public side, and then, you know, then we're looking at trying to get some second shift coverage as well with this program. You know, we, the Hartsford Transit, I didn't talk about that, we just started a public, in May, we started the Hartsford Transit, and I came before city council talked to them, and it was very similar. You know, we don't know what the need is. And we were in Hartsfield nine years ago. The rap did not do great at all. We did things a little bit differently back then. I was anticipating four or 500 folks a month using that service. And from May to right now, I think last month, we had 1,500 passenger trips just from the city of Hartsfield. So the way we're doing, the way we're going through that process and the way that the information's being put out there, and the app on the smartphone that I didn't talk about earlier, where you can track a live bus anytime, wherever, in your service area, you don't have to wait by a bus stop for 10 minutes in the middle of the summer time, you know where the bus is. We're actually exceeding our expectations in most areas. And I know for a fact, connecting these rural communities and within the city of Dillon, the need is certainly there. And it wouldn't take long for that to be visible.
What's the rotation on the stops, on the 10 to 14 stops in Dillon? What's the time interval?
In the city of Dillon, we would probably run a 30-minute headway, which means from this, let's say wherever the certain point is, if it's City Hall, or wherever, maybe in Dillon, 30 minutes later, it'd be back to that point. A lot of places, it's one hour, depending on the service. I think Dillon, as far as the city itself, just within the city limits, you could probably do every 30 minutes.
Like I just said, the person, would they have, could they call, could they call the office somewhere where Bud picks up a, a second wheelchair?
Yes, sir. So we had, we went from barely having any demand response trips in Marlborough County, now we have over 500 or 600. What those folks are doing, they call us the day before, before, before 6:00 PM. So if you call me tonight before 6:00 PM, and you needed, we need to pick you up tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock in the morning, take you, take you to your appointment, we would do that.
Now, I think there's, there's some kind of transportation they can get for three days.
72 hours, that's, that's for Medicaid purposes. And we have seen a lot of folks start using our service, because what happens with that, and I'm not, this is not, I don't, not talking down about them, but you end up having 70, 80-year-old individuals get on the bus, and then they're riding around for three or four hours before they get home. And they find out there's another service that can go to their house, pick them up, and there might be just one or two people on the, on the smaller buses, they jump all over. They don't want, they want to get away from that environment. This is a better situation.
How many days a week?
Starting out, what we're looking at is five days a week. That proposal and that cost of service would be five days. We already have folks asking for more service on Saturdays and Sundays, and that's something that could come down the road, but right now, we'd be looking at five days.
Well, you can't do anything, not because you don't have it on the agenda. I mean, you had it on the agenda to hear.
Earlier this week, you did an answer, we'd be next, you know, we'd have to put it on the agenda for next time, next month. Is that, you know, I know that's not what you want to hear, but.
We could certainly make that work.
Kind of quick, kind of quick.
Yes, sir.
For us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So let's just put that on the agenda, y'all think about it, ask around, and.
Well, I'll probably just call each one of you two to get some information during, between now and next meeting, to get some feel, because you took $10,000 through our budgets, we almost six months into our budget, so we've got six months remaining, 35,000.
The counties are in Dillon.
The county hasn't paid any money yet.
But when they do.
The county's paying money in July.
Is a bus going to come into the city?
I can't answer that.
Is a waiting area going to be at the courthouse? I'm just wondering. Is that something we need to reach out with, collaborate and see kind of what you're thinking?
I will.
Okay.
All right, let's move on. Citizens report.
Dr. Wallace, I do have over 100 light, Christmas lights that I got into my shop. I haven't gotten them in any trees yet, but if you want to come by and pick up some and help me out, come get them.
What do I need to do?
Just stop by the shop and say you need some Christmas lights to put in the trees. I got them for you, they're all LED and clear.
Are you talking about the lights for the trees?
Downtown, yeah.
Good. Might do that.
Anybody that wants to adopt a tree and put it up, I got them.
Good, you're good. Anyone else? Okay, old business, none, new business, ordinance number 19-07, First Bank Property.
This is the first reading on city and First Bank exchanging properties that we've discussed, their property being Main Street, and our property being the public parking lot here on MacArthur and East Harrison Street.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Well, let me ask you a question real fast. We talked in previous meetings on the First Bank building. If we decide to go along with this proposal, David had mentioned that the upstairs needed a lot of work done to it. I don't want to misspeak, am I saying it right, David?
That's correct.
With First Bank, are they going to get that cleaned up for us too, so we're moving in, ready, and we decide to go?
I don't think that was anything that we discussed. I mean, that's something we can look at right now and tell them, y'all don't use upstairs for nothing. I mean, it's.
I had been up there, so I don't know, I'm just going by what you said, it's a big mess up there, so.
I mean, it's just empty rooms. I don't, I couldn't, Dave and I went up there along with Mr. Moody, and it was dark. I mean, that's, I don't know that it's ever been used in years, as far as I know.
Mr. Law, on the September 25th Restore Pro, gave y'all a recommended work area, is that something that's already been?
We're in the process of that, I think. They hinged it today.
Okay.
And so we've got to go back, they cut holes in the wall, dried it out. Took care of everything they said they were going to do, we got to go back in and dig the inside now. That's been done.
Well, that's all I have.
I'll make a motion that we go, we can transfer.
A second. Hold it in favor, raise your hand. opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Ordinance number 19-08, closing alleyway, Harrison Street. Any discussion?
Now, this is the alleyway between.
Well, I'll shorten it up, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we do that.
Well, let me, let me. And then on the back of your, on the back of your copy of ordinance is a map. This is the alleyway that separates the parking lot.
Strickland.
And from the Strickland properties, and then it runs behind Black Tire and that vacant lot. It's just an alley that the city hasn't used or maintained, I said 10 years, but we haven't done anything, I know, for the last 25 years.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilman David.
A second.
All those in favor?
Raise your hand.
Opposed? Okay. Ordinance number 19-09, transfer of city land to Brandon Turner.
This is last month, Larry, you still here? You didn't go slip? This is the property that Larry McKenzie brought to us, where we have an old railroad spur off of 301, behind Mr. Turner's property, that we do not maintain. He's been maintaining it for years. It serves no purpose to us, in fact, there's no taxes coming off of that property. We have had one in the previous years that we did for Arthur Thompson's one block south.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we transfer that property.
Second. All those in favor, raise your hand. opposed? All right. Ordinance number 19-10, retail, commercial, business incentives.
Back in February, I brought to council some ideas, and I've been sitting on it and sitting on it, and I don't want to sit on it too much longer because we're starting to have movement. But these incentives are something that are comparable to other little town cities in our areas that are doing. But I don't want to have these incentives strictly downtown, I want them throughout the city. Cause we want to see downtown blossom, but we also want to see other parts of the city to do as well. So, these are incentives that we're proposing. We want to get the agreeance with it, we can work with what we have, and then down the road, if we see that we may want to change it, we can do that. I'd also like to think that it would be in our best interests, showing good faith and for those that are doing some work now, anybody who's already started and drew a permit, that we can let them follow in this. Anybody agree with that?
Well, I'll make a motion that it's not completely city limits.
Well, it is, it doesn't, it doesn't say, it just says within the city of Dillon, it doesn't say anything about downtown. I would just like to know.
No boundaries, the whole city.
Yes, it's within the whole city.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, budget amendment, ordinance number 19-11, budget amendment.
This was stormwater employees. Which will take effect in January, based on your last, the last one.
And that's $11 an hour and $15.
Twenty-six dollars an hour combined.
So, roughly $52,000, $54,000 in salaries. And there's, it generates, what a year, 132,000, we've got 168,000, is that where?
Somewhere in that ballpark.
You know, we talked about the truck, you know, it's what, $62,000 a year we pay on that, and we've got three more payments.
Two more payments.
Two more payments.
Yeah, we did, two.
Okay. Yeah, I know we're going to have that paid off, but that doesn't mean that we're going to have to replace it someday. So, you know, I'd just like to see our budget reflect replacement also of some of that equipment. So.
Well, that's something we could do in the next budget year, if you like, come up with a percentage.
We started with $4 per.
No, I'm talking about for depreciation.
Right, right.
You know, come up, say, 5% of whatever we generate in revenue goes toward depreciation.
As we see progress, then, you know, we can, we can change that, you know, that number also to $4. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
My second.
All those in favor? Okay. And the last, ordinance number 19-12, zoning map amendment.
What are the plan on doing for, probably switching to a B2?
Can you answer that?
Yes, sir. The owner has a proposal to build a restaurant, the name is Mr. Terry McCray. He's known as Do-Right, he used to have the restaurant there on First Avenue, and he's proposing to build a restaurant on that land.
Did the, didn't the owner agree to?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Councilman, there was a fourth, Johnny.
I mentioned this the last couple of months, with the upbeat grant money. And we getting anywhere with that, with the $15,000?
No, sir. Unless we, the only thing we can do is bring a civil lawsuit.
We talked about when you got the purchase, when Miss Mitchell, we were trying to get some of that money. How did it happen?
That didn't matter. The only thing we have to do is do a civil lawsuit. If that's what council would like, then you can, then you won't have to.
But didn't the funds from her come to you?
No, sir. We didn't get any of that.
I really think we need, we can get the taxpayers more.
The only way to do that is lawsuit, the only way to do that.
Well, I tried.
I'm not saying he got anybody, I'm not saying. Got, we, something y'all will tell us to do.
I'd like to get the input from other council members on how they feel about it. I mean, I don't hear them saying anything about it, and, I mean, I'd just like to get their input on what they feel and how we pursue getting the money. Has anybody got any input they'd like to share?
The grant money should be done or used in a proper way.
I think, you know, one of our problems is, is we've learned, you know, how that, how we distribute, and maybe we need to have proof of activity before we give the grant or completion.
Like stages.
Yeah, yeah. And maybe in stages, that's possible too, but it just, we're, when we started that, that was our second year.
It was the first version.
Very first one.
Very personal.
You know, we got burned, and, you know, and I know this man, and he is kind of falling a little bit on hard times, he's had recent surgery, and it's just, you know, he's a good person. He didn't mean to, you know, to deceive us, I think he had all intentions of, you know, fixing that building and just ran into more than he thought was there. And I, if council wants to, you know, go through a lawsuit, you know, for $15,000, I, you know, that's, I mean, I'll do whatever y'all want to do, but I, I think we've learned our lesson, that's one thing, too. I don't, you know, we're going to skin $5,000 or $6,000 chasing $15,000, I'm sure.
I agree with the fact that that error was made, and we need to do it in stages from this point on, but I just think we're.
We didn't do it this year, we didn't have the money.
We're chasing ghosts, we're chasing ghosts. Learn by mistake.
I'll move on.
Well, I think if we do one as a future.
Yeah.
Then it can't be a condemned deal.
Right.
It has to be something there.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move on. I want to mention a couple of things about the principal. First of all, I don't want to misspeak, but are we trying to put two police cars, buying two police cars in our budget every year?
That's the plan.
That's the plans, okay? I want to go back to Timbo, is, it might be an issue after this, along with me, about more presence in the neighborhoods, okay? I'd like to see us, we missed out on the JAG grant a couple of years ago. We got $169,000 in our 3% money, getting laptops in these vehicles. Also, you can print the wireless tickets, I mean, the paperless tickets. And it alleviates the police officer having to leave and come back to the police department and spend an hour, two hours up here, and he can be in the neighborhood and doing his reports in the car or whatever. So, I'd really like to see us push this issue and see if we can't find a way, get an estimate of how much money it's going to cost to do this.
We looked at that during the budget process, Chief, you remember what the cost?
About $75,000.
$75,000? Put it in all the.
Put it in the patrol car.
In the 16 patrol cars.
But I really would like to see us do this, and this would help.
And they would too, they would too.
I mean, you got the money available, we're not doing any seizing, any property or any money anymore, so, and the money's just sitting there, and we're not using it, it's just, so, we get a little bit of interest off of it. So, I believe we could use that money, enhance, you know, the presence of the police when they bother instead of coming back.
Our DEA money.
How much we have in there?
170,000, 170,000.
So, you looked on the stat 170,000?
I did, I was going, I was going to try to step on that.
No.
Sound's right.
The sound's all right, what you got in there?
I don't have any more?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
169.
Also, I'd like to ask, well, I have to ask you, Lynn, to ask the chief, if he was monitoring more behind the library, you got a lot of activity from 2:00 to 5:00 in the morning, people just lauding around, everything, plus the way. Have we made any headway with the motels and the hotels out here?
Which they're working on.
Still working on them.
I also want to recognize a police officer, Xavier Williams. Had a young fella didn't want to go to school the other day, and the police officer was at the school. He coached the guy, the little young man, and was there for him, and helped him get over his thing he was going through, and I thought that was a good thing, that the police officer was there to help a young kid during all my time. Last thing I want to ask you, a policy in the police department, driving under suspension, can you tell me how we manage that, if somebody like that gets stolen?
I'm not sure what your question is.
Is someone is driving the vehicle, do they automatically go to jail, or does the police officer have discretion?
It depends on what, what they're under suspension for.
Speeding ticket violation, they go to jail?
Normal circumstances, they would go to jail. You also have your driver's license suspended for not paying vehicle tax, and you cannot go to jail for that.
Okay, so you don't go to 71, it's over there. Also, I'd like to extend my gratitude to the veterans. I want to tell them, thank you for everything they do for us, and who wants to serve him, who wants to serve him before we go, I want to tell you thank you.
That's all I got. Thank you. Judge?
I had heard, and that the, we were going to upgrade to the 800 megahertz, I meant 800. Are we doing that with the police process? 800 megahertz?
Lynn, you want to do that?
Yeah, cause I do. It's over me.
We have, we had 800 megahertz radios, and it was costing us about $20 per radio, and that means a walkie-talkie, $20, and a in-call radio is $20, and that was $20 per month. And we were, we also had a high-band radio system, and that was free, so it was my decision to get rid of that 800 radios. We still have two, and we're just using our high-band system.
All right. The other thing I had, obviously today, we had an event at the Veterans Square for Veterans Day, and we had a great crowd and a great program. And I just wanted to ask, do we have any veterans in the courtroom? If you please stand.
Stand up, dude.
I want to recognize these individuals. I would like to thank each and every one of you for your service to your country and your community. And obviously, the veterans bear the responsibility of our nation's protection and deserve our thanks and support, and they have made our nation and world a safer place to live. And as my dad would say, they are our true gatekeepers. And I just want to apologize.
We probably went to city, probably have 10, either active or retired or inactive.
That's all I have.
Lynn, down there where they rhyme, something, we got a grant there one time to fix that business.
Got a grant to take out the hazmat material, not the mess of the building.
They were setting up, that he's pulled that, paid a certain amount of money to finish it, and then.
Now that, I remember.
He had this amount, $36,000, he was, he had other cars done, something like that, I don't remember the car.
If, if it went to the next step, all we did was raise an assessment, and then whatever they found, we cleaned up, and the grant paid for that. Which was about 10 years ago.
Well, they left him right back where he was at.
Pardon?
I said, they left him right back where he was at.
Yeah, I mean, all it did was clean up the hazmat material off the ground and what was, they found in the soil, but that was removed.
If they ain't nothing we can do about it, why, why, if they ain't nothing we can do about it, turn that stuff down, why can't you get out there and clean it up? They might clean it something. He gonna just let it continue to grow on, just let it die during one day?
I make that assumption. Now, there is something that I'm looking to do, some grant money, possibly, working out a deal with him, whether we want to profit or not, I don't know. But that's something we could, could do, that I don't know if we want to profit.
He don't want to.
I don't know if we.
Been on the, on the other, on the other coast that owned, oh, down Main Street, they got their money, and the one thing, they ain't doing no building, what's going on over there? Didn't you find something?
Sir?
Want some of them that were, were fine on that building?
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir.
And there were some that wanted to get them built, or redone, ain't done it with them, eh?
Yes, sir.
So, what they do about the one that owned the building but ain't doing nothing for it, just let it sit there? What going to let you happen to them?
Same process as the tenants of the building, the buildings that are vacant, we're in the process, right now, we sent out, I think we had issued nine summons, the court found four that has pled guilty, paid their fines. We have five pending to appear before the municipal judge. Probably have identified at least six or seven more that we'll be sending out certified letters to, and those are the vacant buildings where you walk on the sidewalk and you can look straight through the building, and is there a lot of storage and junk and things of that nature that's in the buildings? We're in the process or in the phase of sending out at least six or seven more certified letters to those property owners, because the buildings are not occupied. But the process, to answer your question, would be the same. They're in violation of the city ordinance, we'll give them at least 30 days to respond, either by abating the situation or contacting us, letting us know what their plans are. And after the expiration of those 30 days, if nothing happens, then we'll follow that same process, or we'll run them municipal ordinance summons, they have at least two weeks after that to either still try to rectify the situation, if nothing happens, it comes before the municipal judge.
And then, they found guilty and paid the fine, we're back to, back to the same place we were, they haven't done anything, so they start that process.
Yes, sir.
And code enforcement, do we have, is there anything we can put, like the non-use of a building, not for repair, just not using it at all? Or can it just sit there with the windows blocked? Or do you ask for it to be used at a certain period of time?
Yes, sir, we're, we've been coordinating with the property owners, actually talking to bridge it, and we got some other things in place outside of those vacant buildings.
How about Mr. Jackson with the agriculture building, did you ever get in touch with him?
Yes, sir, we did.
What, what's that, what's that come with him, is he going through the process of course system?
Yes, sir, he's one of the ones that pled guilty, he realized that he's in violation of the ordinance, he paid his fine, he since then has spoken to a contractor, they're supposed to bring plans back to me, and so we can present them to the Board of Architectural Review for their approval. But as Glenn had mentioned a few minutes ago, if that doesn't happen, then we'll start the process over, which will write probably up to about three fines. Those fines by the city ordinance is the judge could find the individual guilty, which means that they'll pay a fine, and it could be thirty days in jail. So, what we're trying to do now, the city do not like, you know, we, we prefer that they, you know, do something with the building, or at least come talk to us, and we can talk to the Board of Architectural Review. And there's so many other avenues that we can go through, grants, things of that nature. But it's just when we get no response here, it kind of ties our hands, and, you know, we have to bring it over.
Now, I just want to thank the veterans for what they do for us, for us right here, and that's all I got.
Um, you know, the, uh, I don't know how many of y'all had doctrine, if you come downtown for the howling, the, uh.
Trumpet tree.
Trumpet tree, that was, uh, that the police put on, and, uh, and it was huge crowd. But anyway, it was just a, another one of those good old Dylan things, uh, it was good, good stuff, that needs to be on our, you know, that's what they need to see when they, when they, when they look us up, things like that, things like, uh, five-a-dollar dance, lighting the Christmas tree. That's all I have, I don't have anything else.
Bridges, we finished with the, uh, the road over there going through, uh, the quarters area, the fixing the water lines and stuff yet?
It's been working on it, Billy, still having some trouble up there, we had a bad leak over there, uh, Friday. So we had to dig the whole, stop the whole road.
Okay, and, um, this is in Johnny, I think, uh, behind the, is it, uh, Stewart? Stewart Hacks is, uh, it's a ditch or something back there that runs over there by the old ballpark.
Right.
Uh, one of the gentleman that lives in that, I think it's Johnny's district, but he want to see, can y'all clean that ditch out back there? Because snakes or whatever that's going on back there, but I'm gonna give Johnny's number so he can get in contact with it. I think that's Bobby's district.
I look at him. Do that, man, we did, we were all up here.
Uh, we see.
Same crowd.
He had the candy cut one time, so we did, uh.
The candy cut the field.
Yeah, he cut, he cut some.
Sometimes it's like.
But you totally fill up here in the winter.
It's like beans or something.
Valuated.
Is anybody else, you know, motion for a journal?
I'd like to vote.
All those in favor?